Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July meeting of the Kent Planning Board. Could we all please rise for their pledge?
Let's make a flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of things first is just for the record, Kathy Doherty is in for the vacant seat for today as an alternate. We're going to start with the minutes from the last meeting. Can I get somebody to accept the minutes?
To make a motion, will you accept the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Start off with Patterson Crossing.
Good evening. Jamie Legudis from Inside Engineering, surveying and landscape architecture. We are back before you following our previous request for an extension that then went to reapproval. We've provided the additional information as far as noting that nothing has changed on the plans themselves and then no new information concerning the project or any other environmental elements have a rise to the best of our knowledge. We are requesting a reapproval of the Patterson Crossing project.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Andrews, engineer to the planning board. I apologize, Bruce and I were kind of late and it's mostly me, but you should have received a draft two of a resolution. And basically, this is a resolution of reapproval of an amended site plan, amended steep slope and erosion control permit, and amended freshwater wetland permit dated today, July 11th, 2024. Amended it somehow the phrase amended got added to this at some point in the past. I can't, I wasn't involved that early on, but it's just kind of continued. And basically, this is not the first time this has been in front of you. This has been ongoing since approximately September of 2010. It continued to maintain all their approvals. And so what you have is, I condensed, if you may recall, some of the older resolutions were up to, I think they approached 20 pages. So I tried to condense everything down and basically to echo what Jamie had indicated, they submitted a timely request. They thought they could get an extension, they could not, they needed a reapproval. The last meeting, the board kindly extended it an additional 30 days to allow them to get the appropriate letter in and to allow us to craft this resolution. The resolution is essentially, basically, the same as you've seen before. We got the letter, they made the necessary representations. You did grant an original site plan, steep slope, erosion control, and freshwater wetland permit for the project on September 9th of 2010. And given the complexity of the project, the number of agency approvals that were necessary for work to commence, and then also taking into account poor economic conditions that kind of have prevailed a little bit since 2010, the planning board has reapproved and/or extended as necessary all the project permits and approvals extending continuously from the original approval up to the current request. So you've never allowed it to lapse. It's not going to lapse now. So basically, there's a couple now therefore resolves I'd like to read into the record for you. The first one is now therefore be it resolved, the planning board based on the information submitted establishing that there have been no substantial changes made to the project, new information submitted or changes in circumstance resulting in any different or new environmental impacts from those previously reviewed in conjunction with the prior approvals, and hereby affirms and accepts its September 9th, 2010 finding statement for the Patterson Crossing retail development in its entirety. The next is because the project has not materially changed from the one approved on September 10th, 2010, and subsequently reapproved continuously from that point till the present, the planning board hereby waives a public hearing on the reapproval of the amended site plan, amended steep slope and erosion control permit, and amended freshwater wetland permit. Be it further resolved that the waivers, terms, and conditions of the prior approvals running from September 10th to the present are incorporated herein by reference. And the rest of this is typical boilerplate and it basically reapproves the project, reestablishes the timeframes associated therewith. If construction is not started within one year of the date of the planning board approval or completed within two years of the date of the planning board approval, you have the ability to grant them up to two 90-day extensions. So it kind of gives them another year plus two 90 days to get this thing moving. And I would submit to you that it's ready for your adoption. Requires a motion, a second, and then roll call vote, please.
If I may, just want to make sure the actual two 90-day extension is reviewable as of 15th of July 2nd. Just to be clear, this even though it is the 11th, this resolution is reflected to effectively not have the discontinuation of approvals until July 2nd.
So when we're approving this, we're going to say takes effect as of July 2nd?
Yes, you could say that, yes.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, sorry, to reapprove the amended site plan, amended steep slope and erosion control permit, and amended freshwater wetland permit for the property known as Patterson Crossing, taken effect of July 2nd, 2024, with all the stipulations that were within this document. That's good?
Mm-hmm, it's good.
Would you like to make that motion?
Second.
All of, oh, one, sorry. Roll call.
I can do the roll call if you wish.
That's okay. Oh, doesn't matter, whatever.
Simon Carey?
Aye.
Thomas Ferrone?
Aye.
Hugo German?
Aye.
Jackie Bishar?
Aye.
Giancarlo Cattucci?
Aye.
Richard Marini?
Aye.
Kathy Doherty as acting member?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all.
Okay. No need to sit down. Morrow Equipment.
Hello, good evening. Jamie Legudis from Inside Engineering, surveying and landscape architecture. Also president from our team is Mr. Rick O'Rourke from Keenan Bean and Mr. Ron Yakin from Morrow Equipment. We have provided some additional information for the board and the consultants to review. As part of our submission, we've provided some additional details pertaining to grading, stormwater management. We have also coordinated with the DEC. They will be on site next Thursday to reaffirm or review the existing wetlands on site, which we will then provide the copy to the board and to the consultants. We have provided for the board also these site sections that we discussed at the last meeting that pertain to the reviews that were reviewed. The plans essentially have not changed with the exception of just giving you additional information. But I would like to just point out the sections themselves again because I think they are thorough in what they provide to your board as far as review of what's seen. So we did provide three different sections. One going through from the mobile gas station through Langtonville Road through the project all the way up to the pet hospital with the red arrows indicating the various views from different points along that section line. We do have, I don't want Ron to yell at me or fall for that matter. We do have, let's not do something. We do have the proposed buildings and cranes shown in this location here to their heights as respective to the sections that we have shown. So there are minimal views within various points of these sections where the crane, the top portion of the crane will be viewed and the end of the boom will be viewed as well. So from 52 to 84, you will have minimal views because you have the buildings that will block a bunch of that view. The top portions of the crane in this area and then the top portion minimally in this area. Again, similarly, another cross-section from 52 running from the entrance area, minimal views from the, from 52, and then again from 84, shielded from views potentially from all vegetation that's existing. So at this time too, I would like to point out that we were in receipt of a draft resolution to circulate as part of SEAKER, which we are thankful for, thank you. As part of that review, we've noticed that the, it was the intention to classify this project as a type one action, which got me thinking a little bit because we were on the impression we were around an unlisted action instead. So we took a look at what those criteria were and why potentially we would have been classified as a type one. We had indicated in the previous submission and this mission that our disturbance would be 10.1 acres. Looking back at it, we had not excluded the slope that we indicated to the board that we were not going to be touching. So that excluded a bunch of acres. So we actually are only disturbing 8.4 acres. So we would love to be classified as an unlisted or have that under consideration tonight. So for the board's reiteration as well, these were the buildings that we proposed. This is the main building in the front. We did provide some additional information pertaining to the wash building that I know was, I'd point that was under review as far as what was going to be in the wash building, what was, how that was going to be handled and how that was going to be part of the actual accessory uses for Morrow Equipment as itself. We provided the, we provided the pressure washing portion of the project. That was a component that was included in the submission. We also included the water recycling that was part of this as the wash building will be in a closed-loop system. We included that in the statement of use that was included. So I believe we've provided a bunch of more information to help you in assist with classifying this as an unlisted action and then also in circulating for SEAKER. Would you want to discuss the DBA? Do you want to discuss the DBA?
Oh, yes, aye. I wasn't hiding, I was just behind the visuals there. My name's Richard O'Rourke, I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean. Obviously, we represent Morrow Equipment. One of the things that is important to us is that we'd like to have the planning board refer us over to the zoning board of appeals on the interpretive issue with respect to the crane. We are aware of the fact that much of the case law in the state of New York states that the crane such as what we have here, which is mobile, which is on wheels, is equipment and it's not a structure, it's not a building. And so that's an issue that I think from an interpretive issue, something that we have to go over to the zoning board of appeals and get clarity on that. So we would respectfully request that the planning board as part of the action refer us over to the zoning board of appeals to address that issue. In the event that there was a determination that notwithstanding the fact that we're a piece of equipment under New York State town law, the building height restriction should apply, then we will be applying for a variance. And so that's our request respectfully.
So if I could clarify or just paraphrase what you said?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to just explain what I think you just said.
Okay, all right.
That because it's a mobile crane?
Yes.
It's not a structure?
That is, it's not a building, correct.
All right. And because of that, you don't think zoning board approval is required?
With respect to the, whether a variance would be required for the height of the crane, we're stating that it is our position and we have case law, which we will of course share with the zoning board of appeals, that the crane is in fact a piece of equipment. It cannot be taxed as a building and under your code, while obviously there is a restriction insofar as the height of a building, there is not any restriction with the height of equipment. That's, that's the distinction. And the reason we say that is because there have been cases decided in the state of New York where tax assessors tried to tax a mobile crane and the courts have said, you can't tax it because it's not a building, it's not a structure. And the reason is that like a locomotive, it has wheels. A locomotive is not a building, it's a piece of equipment. And it's not, not just us, but the courts have said the same. So anyway, that's an interpretive issue. I think the building inspector has taken a look at it and has said, look, I think this could be restricted under the building height restriction. And in addition to that, it should be considered for a variance. And we're just saying, okay, we think respectfully that's a mistake, but if in fact that's the determination, then we're going to seek the variance. Is there anything more for you? No, I think that's it. I mean, I'm not going to, I mean, it's just, it's really a matter for interpretation, not for the planning board, so that's why we have to go to the zoning board of appeals.
There's definitely a gray area in there with fixed tracks to a mobile crane.
Well, I, you know, I can, I, look, I think that there's, there's arguments that could be made. You know, I'm not, I'm not before the zoning board, I was a former chairman of the zoning board of appeals and former town attorney and everything else. You know, statutory construction is, whatever the law says, your code says, is interpreted in favor of the property owner and against drafter. So our argument would be in part that because the restriction that's set forth in your ordinance deals with building and what we have is a piece of equipment, that therefore the height restriction doesn't apply to a piece of equipment. That, in essence, that's our argument. So.
So I'm wondering if there, there are many buildings with gantry cranes inside that run on rails and that's a piece of equipment. But I don't know, does that fall, Bill, would that fall under your permit process? If a building had a gantry crane, would, would they, they need to submit plans for that and it'd be subject to your approval?
Also the tax law, it's tax, it's tax law that this determination, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so, but it's tax law that the determination has been made for, not zoning law.
I looked at this cement a couple weeks ago. It's a different version than what they originally submitted. It's equipment, it's remote operated where the other one wasn't. It had an operator up on top and it had a cabin and it was a little taller than what this version adheres. So under those changes, I see it as equipment in this particular case. The previous version, we had the argument that it was a building, you had a person that was in it, how do you get him out? And it was, and it was a lot higher. So I don't see it as a major point.
The last drawing I saw for the crane, even though you did say it was remote, did have the cab still up there.
I didn't see a cab, but it's remote.
So, so this is the crane and this crane could be used for this yard crane, which we're going to use it for. This crane can also build high-rise buildings, it's the same piece of equipment. What you're referring to as the cab is this piece right here.
Yeah.
Where if the operator was doing a high-rise building, he would be sitting there. Sure. Ron Yakin, Morrow Equipment. So that cabin for the operator when he's on a high-rise building is built right into the crane, it can't be taken off.
Right.
But it has a remote control system, like a couple of joysticks and so forth. This crane will be operated from the ground with the joysticks. We won't be using that cab.
Okay.
Can I clarify?
Better to be than it did last time.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
Okay.
If I may, just one more thing. The, I apologize. I, I didn't, I didn't, I was, I didn't want to get behind the voices. All right. Obviously, the determination by the building inspector is what, what's at issue here. It sounds as though this evening he said that based upon, you know, the change in the application of what we have here, and perhaps our argument is made a little bit more clearly, it is in fact a piece of equipment, then I, the referral to the zoning board of appeals need not be made for the interpretation. So that's, that's where we are with that. The second thing is obviously what's before the board as well is the notice of intention to declare lead agency for secret purposes. That would allow us to proceed with and process the application. Obviously, time is always of the essence with the property owner. So we're trying to move it along as quickly as possible. So the referral could be made. We do have one area variance that is necessary. Jamie, I'll have Jamie address that issue. We do have to go to the zoning board of appeals for that issue and I'll have Jamie explain that one, so.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't letting that slip through the cracks, that we are still, we're seeking a variance for the outside storage of equipment. So that still is, is in play and we are looking for that referral.
So you're not seeking a variance for the tower itself?
At this point, I would say no.
It's equipment, I mean, there's a.
Who's going to determine whether this is a piece of equipment? It's just on somebody's word or is there's a book that defines it, is it our town code? I mean, it's fixed 90 or 60 feet in the air above our variance or town code. I'm not against it either way, I'm just stating like, how does we determine this is a piece of equipment?
From what speed?
We just need a mobile, like.
You know, if it had a boom that could lower down out of that aerial, like a crawler crane, it could lower itself down out of our variance, the height code, right? This is fixed above.
Correct. I mean, I have an issue with the height, but it's a piece of equipment. It's being controlled remotely from the ground. There's no, there's no occupancies up above it. And I think that's what, the last time they came for an application, that was my big argument, was that there was a human being 100 and some 70 feet in the air, there was no access to it, no way to get him out. And even though it was being moved, the building that, it was, I looked at it as a structure. I don't see it as a structure per se, I see it as equipment this time. There is a, I'm concerned about the height, but you know, I mean, cell towers go up there also and they're, they're a piece of equipment, they're stationary to the ground, but.
Bill, on the storage, on the storage variance, right?
Right.
The fact that the storage will come and go, meaning it's stacked sometimes, it's not stacked other times, does that affect the, how you view it versus if it was a permanent structure of that height?
No, because it could change and the, the height requirement on that is pretty much set. So that's, they need the variance for that.
Even though that height comes and goes, that height is.
Right. I mean, on Monday, it may be 12 feet, on Friday, it could be three tiers high.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, for the avoidance of doubt, absolutely what happens is this, this is equipment and so it goes out to a site, so, so the height will go down, but nevertheless, there will be times, and that's why we're asking for the variance, there will be times when we think we will obviously reach a different height, we want to get a variance for that purpose. And we recognize we cannot go above that and we will not go above that, so. Insofar as the, the issue of the, whether this is a building or it's a piece of equipment, I'm not going to bore you with the details, but certainly there's case law out there that says that a bridge being not essential to the support of a building or structure and could be removed without injury to land or building was not properly assessed as part of real property. And the crane was on two tracks and it was deemed to be equipment. And the same thing under regulations of the Occupational and Safety Health Administration, this is, this is equipment, it's not a building, so. So anyway, I just want to make sure you understood that. Thank you.
Thank you. No, Bruce.
Can we jump in just in case?
Are you sure you're all set?
Can you see me?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Barber, I'm the towns environmental planning consultant. The transmit letter that we received from Inside Engineering relative to these project Morrow Equipment LLC was twofold. Number one, to hopefully develop an intent for lead agency for circulation under SEAKER, and number two, to get the board's authorization and opinion, if you will, about sending this to the zoning board of appeals. This evening, we have some changes to the plan that have been made that both Mr. Andrews and I were unaware of until right now. And so some of the items have changed in terms of the board's consideration. Number one, as Jamie indicated, the current environmental assessment form indicates a land disturbance of 10.1 acres. That by itself automatically constitutes a type one action under SEAKER and that is why the intent for lead agency indicates it as such as a type one action. Now, what Jamie has just indicated is that the actual disturbance is 8.8 acres and in reducing it in size, I believe in reviewing the type one actions under SEAKER, that would then correctly have this fall into an unlisted action. But the challenge we have right now is when we do an intent for lead agency, we are circulating the EAF and the other associated documents to the involved and interested agencies for their review and for the involved agencies comment regarding whether the board will retain lead agency status. At this time, we do not have a correct document because the EAF indicates 10.1 acres and in actuality, that appears to be 8.8 acres. And there may be other areas of the plans as well that need to be modified and corrected. So that's number one and the board can consider one of two things in that regard, I believe. The first would be to ask the applicant to submit revised materials that would be suitable to circulate for lead agency and at such time receipt by John and my review, if found to be again complete, that could be circulated at that time, or obviously the board can hold an abeyance until next month, until you have an opportunity to review the revised documents as well, in addition to John and I to have it circulated for lead agency. But as it stands now, we cannot send out the documents for lead agency because they are no longer correct documents. That's number one. And number two has to do with the zoning. Basically, the planning board can authorize and actually the applicant is, as a right, has the ability to go to the zoning board of appeals. The only thing I want to caution everybody that's involved in the project is that the zoning board of appeals cannot make a determination under the, under a variance requirement until secret process is completed. And so the zoning board can go through the review process and the applicant can solicit some comments from the zoning board and feedback. They indeed can even have their public hearing, but they enclose the public hearing, they just cannot render it a secret decision prior to this board's completion of review if indeed you become the lead agency, which would appear to be the case. So the fact that we have some plans that have changed tonight and, you know, we have now maybe a, not a structure that we're involved with the variance, because again, the documents that, that we put together, John and I, have to do with the variances for the structure of the height, it's being 99 feet, as well as the storage, the storage areas as well. So there's a few changes that need to be made. I'm not comfortable in sending them out as is because they're no longer accurate, I can't recommend the board to do that at all. It will be up to this board if A, you decide that it would be appropriate to send this to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board will be the agency to determine the interpretive element in terms of whether it's a structure, a piece of equipment, along with Mr. Walters. And in addition, they will be the end agency for whatever variances are required in terms of height, et cetera. be the end agency for whatever variances are required in terms of height, et cetera. But they cannot render that decision for the height until the secret process has been completed. You know, so I think at this time, the board really needs to determine if you feel comfortable having the process continue sort of on the fly, per se, if you will, with these changes being made this evening, or if it's more adequate to get a complete set of drawings, have those be accurate, and then move forward accordingly. And if there's an interim step where you feel that if those drawings can come in, and the EAF can come in, revise in a week or two, and you feel comfortable sending it out under lead agency circulation status, then you would direct John and I and Vera to do so. So right now, what we could do is we could amend the intent for lead agency to have the 10.1 acres indicated to 8.8. I'm sorry? Eight point four. It's getting smaller as we speak. Actually, there's no land disturbance associated. John, I'm hearing voices up here. I don't know what happens to you. And the second thing is with that, then it would be an unlisted action, and you would be, in essence, adopting this amended or as amended resolution this evening. But then the direction to John and myself would be either to work with the applicant to receive the amended documents, and then authorize when complete to have Vera circulate them to the involved and interested agencies, or you may choose to say we want to see this back again with the changes before we're comfortable sending it out for circulation purposes. So it's up to you. But you can adopt this resolution, but it doesn't have to be sent out this evening pursuant to your request.
If I may?
You may.
We would be happy to provide any updated documents tomorrow so that we can assist Vera with any circulation if you thus authorize it to be sent out. I could go back to my office and do it now. My husband may not be in favor of that. But that is where we would lean.
I think that the obvious is that you just want a complete set of documents where everybody's looking at the same thing at the same time. You know, John and I, excuse me, John and I are looking at one, you folks are looking at others, Jamie has submitted something else. We just want everything to be the same, the same revision dates, the same everything, so we're on the same page.
Yep, absolutely.
You what?
My recommendation would be to allow them to submit amended documents and authorize us to... He gets the process started. You're not losing anything.
For the intent for lead agency?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
That's just a simple motion, that one?
Right. What we're going to do... So we're going to look at some whereas's.
Okay, one, two, third whereas down.
Six.
We're going in the very last part of that sentence, the purpose to disturb 10.1 acres.
So that's not eight point four?
Thank you. It's on the anger shoulder. Thank you.
How many did you say?
Eight point four.
Eight point four.
So 10.1 acres has been modified to eight point four. And then it goes on, for the state, the very bottom of that page one, where is the planning board conducting a court interview on the post, type-one action. Type-one will be changed to unlisted action. So basically, it would be two changes. One, two, third whereas down, 10.1 acres, modified to eight point four acres. The last whereas on page one, the type-one action has changed to unlisted.
Unlisted.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, and then it would be for approval of the as amended intent for lead agency resolution, a motion, a second, a vocal call.
As amended application? Okay, so this is just a simple motion, then?
Motion, a second, a vocal call.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to send out the intent to be lead agency for... What's the address on Route 52? Sorry?
Coordinated review for the unlisted action.
Okay, so do I mention the change of...
We're going to do that.
Okay, so... Well, what's the address on Route 52? Do we know? I just have New York City. Sorry?
Around the application, 52, Section 12, block down.
Yeah, it's...
We'll do the tax on that. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to be the intent lead agency for a property known as the tax map, as Section 12, Block 1, Lot 44, for the unlisted action. And do you want me to do the third whereas, just to read it in?
To be an amended resolution, whereas the third whereas has been modified from 10.1 acres to eight point four acres?
Okay, as amended application, which on the amended... It's 10.1 acres has been amended to eight point four, and at the...
Type-one has been modified to...
Type-one has been modified to an unlisted.
Correct.
This is subject to all documents being submitted as soon as possible. Showing this change.
Right. What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is indicate that the business conditions on the application, that maybe revised document is suitable and acceptable to the town engineer and the town environmental planner for circulation within...
Two weeks? We're not, two weeks is...
Within two weeks.
Okay, so... Do I have to say the same word you just said? Okay, good. Okay. So I made that motion. Who'd like to second it?
I'll second it.
And Tom Ferrone?
Aye.
Jackie Bouchard?
Aye.
John Carlock?
I can't even pronounce your last name.
Aye.
Hugo German?
Aye.
Richman, aye?
Aye.
Kathy Doherty?
Aye.
And myself is aye.
The other thing is, again, referral to the zoning board of appeals, the applicant has a right to do that, just so that the applicant is clear. There is an interpretive question they have about the height of the structure. There is a definite variance that's required for the height of the stored materials that they're seeking. The determination cannot be made of a height variance by the zoning board of appeals to the secret process completed by the lead agency, which most probably will be this board. Okay?
Okay.
Any questions?
No. Can I clarify something in the board?
Yeah, of course.
Or add to that, please? And I'm going to paraphrase. Rick, you may need to jump in for... I know. I believe the variances cannot be acted on until seeker is completed with the planning board, correct? And then I'm just understanding this, but the interpretation can. Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure that I understood. Thank you.
Well, to quote an old attorney friend of mine, if I may, and I don't mean to jump in.
That's okay, you did.
No. In order for belt and suspenders, I think that you refer them to the ZBA for the identified variances and the potential for a interpretation if they determine it to be necessary after consultation with the building inspector. That covers everybody, and then they can go do what they got to do. Does that make sense, Counselor?
It makes sense, other than the fact that obviously, the building inspector has made his determination, so.
Well, until we see the writing, yes, we may...
That's true.
...say it tonight.
Said it tonight, but it's obviously part of the record, but anyway, all right. But be that as it may, we need to have a referral for the height variance with respect to the storage, and that's... We appreciate that. Thank you.
Very well. And just for the record, the board is aware that our legal counsel, planning board counsel, is not here this evening, and so that this discussion is subject to review by legal counsel, as is always the case when the applicant is represented by legal counsel and we are not at the meetings, just to be for the record. Okay?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask for one more thing while I'm here? With regard to reaching out to the consultants, would the board be okay to authorize us to do so outside of a regular submission, so that we can continue the process and make sure everything is streamlined?
Do you have any objections?
We don't. Typically, there's going to be... The boards are part of this one, and we're meant to be present during this discussion. If we have no objection, if that's something...
If you have no objection, that's fine. Anybody else have any objections up here?
Nope.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Your cue, man. As long as, as you said, one board member is...
Vera, did you get all that?
I will copy... Do I need to designate a certain individual, or is that...
No, it just needs to be somebody from the board.
Okay. Most likely the chairman.
We'll have to coordinate the meeting through Vera.
Through Vera, okay.
And she'll coordinate who the necessary individuals are.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Booping right along. We're up to number three, Simon.
Okay, next on the agenda is Flintlock Storage.
Good evening. Jamie Leggins from Inside Engineering, surveying landscape architecture. We are back before you as... Basically, we have asked for a contract vendee to be included on the application as the intent is to sell the property from Frank and Christine Vassi to AMAX. They are looking to do that in the near future, and we are looking to have the bonds that were executed, that were provided through your board, be approved and sent to the town board for their approval. We also are looking for the stormwater agreements and other agreements to be provided by the planning board attorneys so that those can be executed as well.
Good evening. So just to echo, her request was actually a two-part request. The first part of her rather lengthy letter was they're making a final submission, making a final submission for prior to signature by the chairman. They believe they have everything satisfied. They have this new contract vendee, so we have to go through the process of formally reviewing everything. So what I would seek tonight is authorization to send the bonds and other instruments to our planning board attorney for his review. I think the stormwater documents are already in process, but I will check on them as well. But the other thing is what we have typically done, what this board has typically done, is when there is a change in ownership, to make sure that everything is continuous, what you typically do is authorize the preparation of a resolution that basically says, hey, we're changing it from party A to party B, and that all the items run now with party B. So what I would seek is not only authorization to get the town planning board attorney involved, but also to craft a resolution for your consideration at next meeting, provided everything is okay, to formally change all the documents into the new owner's name. And that's just a simple resolution.
Okay. So we'd like to make the motion to refer the...
Bonds to the town attorney.
Bonds to the town attorney.
Planning board attorney.
Sorry, yeah, you're right.
And then authorize the crafting of a resolution memorializing the change in ownership.
And we're going to authorize the creation of a resolution to change the ownership.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good? Okay, and I'll reach out to Joe and see where everything is, because I know he's had his up, so.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Thank you very much.
Okay, Wells Fargo.
Hello, my name is James Polinsky. I'm from Sign Company, Signs Inc., down in Yorktown Heights. I provided packets for everybody's. Everybody have the packet to look over. Wells Fargo is doing a national rebrand of many sites. They're looking to do, rather than a tall pylon street sign, they're looking more towards a monument sign, which would be lower to the ground. That's one of the big changes. The other would be changing the letters that exist now, changing that red background and going to a tan background, and making the letters red rather than yellow. Upgrading some of the drive-up signage on the rear that you won't really see from the road. What you will see from the road is three do-not-enter signs that are not currently there. They want to add those. That's really the main portion of the application.
So the applicant has provided the board with some drawings and some photographs of the proposed signs. In consultation with the building inspector, there are several aspects of the application that are in excess of what is allowed as a right in the town code under the signed ordinance, specifically the size of the sign, the number of signs, and also some of the base material that's proposed for the freestanding sign. As individual components, these are relatively minor, but there are several elements here that are beyond what is allowed under the current code. So it's recommend the board suggests to the applicant that they submit an application to the zoning board of appeals for the variances that are required for these elements that are in excess of the town code, and upon receipt of those variants, come back before the board just for final approval.
So there's no action today?
No action, the board only went to the...
Okay. So we just have to... That's just a simple motion to...
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to send Wells Fargo to the zoning board of appeals, and once... Come back to us.
Make that motion.
Who's second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so I know, since I have to come back, is there any objections to what's proposed as far as the look, or anything that we should change?
Thank you. Once the zoning board, the board, to review that, we substantially, they're very basic, Wells Fargo side, I remember discussing earlier, but zoning board been modified at some point.
I do have one question for you, just one here.
Yeah, sure.
The new one that you call it the monument, is that that's also going to be lit?
Yes.
And it's just, is it, it looks like it's going to be in the same spot as the other one?
Yes, it'll be, yes, roughly in the same spot as what exists now.
Okay.
Yeah, just if there was any comments or any objections, I would just make a note of, or, you know, this way when we come back to see you.
So it's backlit like the nail place?
This is small. This is big.
You knew I was going to... When we send it, when we send it to ZBA, are we telling them?
So this will be, then, we decide they're going to allow their signs because they're outside there.
We're sending the entire thing, or they're...
Good evening. Bill Walters, building inspector. When we reviewed this application, the sign that's in the front is 12 square feet larger than the requirement. It also is, there's no stone monument. In our current code, signs of that are supposed to be on a stone monument. There is no stone monument there. I think it looks pretty good. I don't have a problem with that, but unfortunately, the code's wrote with a stone monument, so for that change, and the increase in the 12-square foot, I believe he's got to go to the zoning board. The other thing, and I wrote, I believe I wrote it to you today, the signage for the drive-through, there's no signs that say do not enter. Now they're putting do not enter because people are foolish. Okay, so we have to put signs up for everybody to follow. It used to be common sense. Nobody does anymore. So again, because it's over the requirement, I think they need to go to the ZBA to get that. I think, I don't have a problem with them, but that's the channel they need to go.
Yeah, that's fine. No real objections, right? We're just weird to see what the ZBA is.
Yeah, I was just trying to see if there was any... Yeah, I was just trying to see if there was any major changes. This way I can make it now, prior to, you know, rather than later, is the only thing.
And the ZBA, the ZBA could very well approve that, what is it, a plastic on the bottom?
No, it's all construction.
It's all construction. And they might very well do that.
Yeah.
But they need to do that, not me.
I got you. I just wanted to see if anybody said, you know what I mean, just rather than come back and say, ah, later or whatever. Cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beardwood and Williams' property.
Good evening, I'm Jonathan Willens. My wife, Julia Beardwood. We are longtime residents of this property. It's a half-acre lot on Lake Sagamore off Route 301. And my family's, our family's owned the property since 1991. It's a 75-year-old house that is falling apart despite our best efforts to keep it afloat, and we need to replace it. So we're here to work with you to make the best property, the best house we can. We're very sensitive to the environmental concerns, being close to the lake, and our architects from River Architects in Cold Spring are working very hard to make this a compliant project that takes the sensitivity of the lake into account. So I'll hand the floor over to Carl from River Architects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carl Hanson with River Architects, representing our clients. So as I said, we've got an existing home on the property that currently has fallen apart, so we're looking to replace it. As it sits right now, half of the, about half of the house sits within the 100-foot wetlands buffer. So one of the big moves that we're going to try to make with the new home is to, is to step it back outside of the wetlands buffer. Now, we do have a patio and a screened porch that will remain in that with the proposed new building, but the main thing that we're coming up against is a constraint with the septic on the inside. So we can only go back so far. So we've basically pushed the house away from the lake and the wetlands buffer as far as we can, and the total enclosed built envelope is fully outside of that with just the porch inside of that. The houses, or the site is mostly flat, so as you can see, the gray area on the site is our area where slopes are over 15%, but where the home is, we are well outside of that. The new home is 4,380 square feet of gross building area, and it conforms in any, every other way to the zoning code. So the wetlands buffers are only potential non-conformance issue that we have on the property. Everywhere else, we're meeting setback requirements, height restrictions, anything else with the home is all conforming. So we're really, the other big positive thing about this, as they mentioned, their concerns about, my environmental concerns, is the house will be going for passive house certification, so it'll be all-electric, no fossil fuel equipment in the building anymore. It'll hopefully have solar, although that'll depend on, there's a lot of shading around, so it may or may not be able to have useful solar for the project. So we are seeking our site plan application and approval and possible wetlands permit for the one non-conformance there.
This is John's, and my first opportunity to review this project. In summary, this is as the applicant indicated, an application to demolish an existing single-family home on property and construct a new single-family home in its place. The property is on the Wesley side of Sagamore Drive, approximately 0.49 acres. It's situated in the R8 zoning district. Basically, this is a replacement, if you will, of an existing house that's in poor condition, and speaking with the building inspector, so long as the property is reasonably similar size, meets the zoning setback requirements, et cetera, it can be allowed to be reconstructed without zoning board of appeals approval within a two-year period. Step to action under seeker. There is frontage on Lake Sagamore. There is some intrusion into the wetland buffer. The applicant has correctly stated a wetland permit is required for that proposed action. Because a wetland permit is required, the code automatically dictates that an erosion instead of controlling steep slope permit is required as well. So the two permits right now that are required would be both the wetland permit and erosion control of steep slope permit. I will be going out to the site with John and whatever planning board members would like to join us to conduct the site inspection in the next few weeks, to have a look at the site in general, also confirm the wetland boundaries as they're shown on the plans. There is no indication that there are any trees that are going to be cut as far as the plan, but we need to confirm that as well. The total land disturbance is very moderate. It's indicated as 0.07 acres, relatively modest. And the well and septic system, we just need some additional information. There's an area that shows where the septic is located. We just need to know more information about the proposed house in terms of change in bedroom count, if there's anything that the health department is going to be involved in relative to septic and well systems. Erosion set patrol plan needs to be provided in compliance with Chapter 66 of the town code in addition to the wetlands I alluded to earlier. Any repairs to the dock or the seawall or any walkways should be called out on the plans as they are in the wetland buffer. There wasn't any mention on the plans as present. Putnam County Health Department approval as required. There's a note on the plan that says "future garage," and basically, we just would like to see that as proposed garage and fleshed out. Typically, we want to make sure that the garage is going to meet zoning requirements, and also if there's any utilities going in there, we want to make sure that there's not going to be any living quarters or whatever pursuant to the town code in that detached building. Need just a couple of, a copy of the deed, some odds and ends. Is there a basement that's finished, oh, going to be planned for the house? Do you know, a full basement?
It's a walkout, a walkout.
Great, okay. So typically with that, we want to make sure there's not going to be any blasting or rock hammering involved as part of the application to create that basement, some exterior lighting details, site distances for the driveway, and basically some details on stormwater. And that's really it. So this is very typical for, you know, a first review of a set of plans that we see. Our recommendation tonight is to not have the board take any specific action other than to direct the applicant to respond to the comment memo. Hopefully, we'll get them back here for the next meeting in August, move this forward towards a public hearing. Any questions?
Did you get a copy of this? Did you get a copy of this?
No.
Okay, I'm going to get you because I scrolled. Okay?
One additional comment I'd like to make is that with regards to the garage, it's just mainly for planning purposes for the driveway, but that's not part of the scope and is not being applied for as being built, even though it's just general knowledge to know for our purposes that it would be going there. And it would be nothing more than a two-car garage with no, with no living quarters or anything like that associated with it.
Okay. I don't think there's any, anybody any questions? Not at this moment.
Great.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
RuPauli property.
Good evening, Paul Lynch from Putnam Engineering. RuPaulis are looking to build a single-family residence on the parcel of property that they purchased. Basically, we've located it up on top of their hillside. It's on, pretty much on the, right along the ridge line. There is an intermittent water course on the backside of the property, and obviously, there's some steep slopes on the front side. We had to work the driveway in as best we could because we were trying to avoid having to drill or blast or have to do any hammering of rock. So that's why there's this one section of the driveway where you get a 15% grade. It's just to keep the driveway up above where I had deep test information and I knew where rock was. We are currently in front of the Putnam County Health Department for review for the septic system, and that's pretty much it.
Good evening. You do have a review letter from Bruce. You don't have an updated review letter from me. I issued a review letter based in, back in January 15th of this year after we made a site visit with Mr. Lynch. Some of the items have been addressed, but most of them remain to be kind of completed to some degree. But what, the item that jumps out is, as Mr. Lynch indicated, there is a section of the driveway that exceeds 10%, and it does approach 15%. That is something that is waivable or addressable by the board. Couple things have to happen. Number one, you have to refer it out to emergency services to see if they are comfortable with it. You also have to refer it out to the highway superintendent to make sure that he's comfortable with the orientation of the driveway and how it meets. And the applicant also has to make a showing of practical difficulty. Now, Mr. Lynch did say this evening that he placed the driveway where it was and at the elevations that it is at in order to minimize rock removal based on information he had with, from deep tests. That's not shown in the documentation, so I'd like to see that because they do have to, in order to get the waiver, as long as emergency services says okay, and the highway superintendent says okay, you have to be comfortable with the practical difficulty. And that's up to the applicant to make the case. There's a couple of other things that we probably need to take a look at is what the tree clearing is going to look like. I'm not sure how, I don't recall whether this lot was really well-treed or not, but we'd like to see what that's going to be involved because they do get very close to the neighbor's property line. And I'm not sure, you know, what the visibility would be, but that does need to be addressed. So there's not much we can do this evening, but I would like you to authorize Vera to send a copy of the plans to emergency services and the highway superintendent and ask for their input with respect to the proposed driveway location and grades. This driveway does also include a retaining wall, so one of the things I'm going to like, Paul did a simple cross-section, but I'm going to like to see a cross-section of the driveway through the retaining walls and how all that works so we understand what's going on. But other than that, there's not much else you can do this evening until we get some additional information. And then I'll defer to Bruce.
So subsequent to John and I and Paul meeting out there, I think it was in January, had another look, and the water course is jurisdictional to the town of Kent as well as to the DEP, City of New York. So there is encroachment into the 100-foot setback. So in addition to the steep slope erosion set patrol plan, there will be a need for a wetland permit. The applicant in the plans that I have indicated there will be 12 trees cut down. I don't know if that's changed or not, Paul. A few more, so we're going to need to see an amendment on that. In addition, the applicant has indicated on the set of plans I have, land disturbance of about 1.38 acres, and so I don't know if a SWIP has been submitted yet for that for John, working on it? Great. So with the erosion set patrol permit, there'll be a stormwater pollution prevention plan that Mr. Lynch is submitting for John's review due to the size of the disturbance on the site. The other thing that John pointed out is that the driveway that was proposed is right up against the neighboring property, and generally, what the board would like to see is some type of vegetated buffer between the property line and any site disturbance anywhere from 10 to 15 feet. So if there are going to be driveway modifications, that would be something desirable for the board to consider requesting of the applicant. Is that all I have? Any questions?
No, Ryan.
Okay.
I have a question for Paul. On your cross-section, so you showed the various, the driveway slopes going up?
Yes.
Just curious, so between Station 170 and 220, you're at 15%.
Yes.
And 220 and 295, you're at 7 and 3/4%. I'm just curious, like, if that was a straight run, not saying you should do that, do you know what that slope might be? We can do the math, but I'm just, it's got to be like 11 or something.
We did it, looking at, the upper section is where we're going to find rock. So it was trying to keep the retaining wall as low as possible, and it actually is going to be somewhere in the six-foot range. If I came up steeper, lower, that retaining wall gets taller. Average out, probably would average out somewhere in that 10% range.
Right.
But you, the other issue I got into is as you turn, make the turn. Through here, the septic system requires a fill, and the driveway is then cut. So you, you're looking for a balance because you can't be cutting into where you got a fill path for your, for your future septic. So there had to be a small buffer that was left undisturbed between the two.
Right, okay.
I have actually one question. How close is that driveway to the property line? I don't see dimensions.
There's no dimension out of it, but I'm going to say it's about three feet.
That's the parking area, right?
Nothing. Anybody?
Nope, that's all I got.
Okay, so we're just going to give permission to, for, give the information to Vera to hand out to the highway and emergency services?
Yes, sir. No action, please, say that.
Okay.
And that they need to show us need. For that driveway, they need to show us unreasonable.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We also need something that why, you know, it's unreasonable to do.
The hardship?
The hardship, yeah.
Sounds like Paul's kind of done some of that work already, so it would be just nice, Paul, to see it summarized in writing, you know, with a request of the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Guys, Guy Lusaki. Saka, sorry.
He's doing that one too.
Yeah, he's doing that one too. It's like Jimmy.
I can't pronounce the name either. This project is here as a result of a violation that was issued. So what we have done is, to the best of our abilities, based on historic records that we could come up with, is, was establish what the original lot configuration was with the house and the original driveway, what got removed, what's been added on in terms of an addition that's been put on, and the change in location of the driveway. And we pretty much quantified how much disturbance took place, what the net change in impervious surfaces are.
As you're all aware, this has been one Mr. Walters has been waiting for. We've had a couple neighbors in as well. I did not prepare an updated memo. I do have a memo that was last issued in January of 2024. Here again, Paul has addressed some of the items, but we need to carry it a little bit farther. He has done a pretty good job of recreating what used to be there and what's there now. I will point out one issue. They did change the driveway. The driveway used to come up to the opposite side of the house. They've swapped it to the other side of the lot. However, in doing that, they now have a small section that exceeds 10%. It's up to 11%. So this one requires a waiver as well. And the fact that the house is built and the garage floor is established, there's not... much else we can do because there's not too many spots where we can move this driveway. But here again, you need to authorize Vera to send it to the highway superintendent and emergency services. This one's a little less impacted because it's a relatively short driveway. But one of the big issues and anyone who's been out there has seen is they kind of cut into the slope behind the house. And Paul has taken a stab at trying to get things back, to get the genie back into the bottle, so to speak. But there's a couple of issues that I just want to specifically point out so that Paul understands. There is a major water problem. That slope weeps water continuously. And if you've been out there, you know the driveway's got to swell across it and it erodes on a regular basis and it creates problems with catch basin down here. So I'm going to need your plans to be revised to address that water drainage problem. And then if we were to go farther down the road where the old driveway is, there's also a little bit of a drainage problem because the way the owner kind of left the driveway, he left it a mess. Now, you, you specify cleaning it up and restoring it, but I think we're going to need a little more detail. So I, I think what's really important here is, emergency services is probably no big deal because it's a very short run and it's only 10 to 11. But what's a bigger issue is what the highway superintendent is going to want because that whole corner has been, this whole stretch has kind of been ravaged by what this guy has done out there. And Paul has made an attempt to rope it back in, but I think he's going to have to go a little bit farther. And alls I would ask is that he would address the remainder of the comments in my memo. We are going to need a stormwater pollution prevention plan. We are going to need some other details. And he's going to really need to take a look at under drains and how all this is going to tie together to protect the future driveway and, and other issues. So there's no action to the board.
So just authorize the same thing, talk about to the highway and emergency services.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the other.
Evening. Nice to be last. Nobody here. John Correll for Mr. Lou Cardillo, who is the owner of this property, and he'd like to say a few words on how this property came to be in the front of this planning board as they relocated the driveway because of severe rock in the area of the driveway. Mr. Cardillo?
Hi, everyone. How are you? I'm Lou Cardillo. I know we spoke at a work session almost before, maybe twice before, but I just want to explain how we got here and I want to apologize how we got here because this was not me trying to do this and ask for forgiveness. I built houses in a lot of other towns and I've always thought that as long as the curb cut didn't move for site distance, as long as it didn't match where the house, the driveway meets the house, that you had discretion at the middle of the driveway. So that's why we're here. If I knew about this, if I knew back then that I had to go through that process, I would have done it while I was building the house. And I want to say again, I apologize for shifting the driveway, but we just hit a lot of rock as we were going for the driveway, putting the driveway in. I thought we were doing the right thing, but obviously we're here now. So I do believe that since we last met, Jack did provide you with an engineer's letter. I believe the drawings have been updated for what was requested. Pictures were sent to Vera for the, showing all the silt fence in place. And I think there was one more thing. But I just wanted to say that I apologize for being here now. I would have done this way before in the beginning instead of, because I have a buyer right now who's supposed to be closing on his house, two nice young state troopers that are supposed to be closing on the house, they're about to lose their rate lock, they're freaking out, they're having a baby. It's creating a lot of stress outside of this. So I would never put myself or them in a situation for a driveway permit. So the house is completely finished, saying they're locked up, waiting for this to get approved.
The plan that's, this plan is the existing plan that was approved. The driveway was on the south side of this lot and went up to the house. The house is fully constructed, the septic is fully constructed and approved by the health department. They had an open work and they're allowed to cover up the trenches and. This is the driveway that, that Mr. Cardillo installed. It's in this, at the same access point off of Smalley Corners Road. Needed to be at this point because of site distance. One of the things that the consultants asked us to do was, need to do was to show the pipe, which, on the original drawings, the pipe crossing in the, in the stone walls were not on the original plan. The, the pipe crossing was here, the drainage ditch crossing was here, now it's here. The original plan had two segments of the driveway between 10 and 15%. And that original plan did not have any driveway segments over 15%. This is the driveway. We had the driveway surveyed and drew a driveway profile. There are two segments of this driveway that are between 10 and 15%, again with none over 15%. And we, what we want the board to do is to treat this as a field change because he's under stress to get this driveway completed. The driveway is basically completed and, you know, first thing we do is get a driveway profile. We noticed the driveway was in the wrong place or a different place and what the slopes, it meets the driveway slope criteria with the board issuing a waiver for the, between 10 and 15%.
The first thing I would say is that obviously we wouldn't be here in this situation if we follow the plans and that was approved. And if you come across a problem, obviously you come back and explain why you cannot do it. That wasn't done. If you're moving something a foot or two, you know, you can, there's substantial, it was substantial where it was moved.
Correct. But one of the things that.
But no, no. I'm just saying is that if, you know, it's like everything else, if you get approval from the board of health to do a certain size septic, you do a certain size septic. You don't just change it and say, well.
No, I fully understand.
What I'm saying, that's where we're first. I understand that it's hard, it's tough for the people that are buying the house, but we, in theory, we should never have got this far. It should have been addressed a while ago. That's, and now we can talk to.
If you'd like me just to move it back, I'll just go ahead and move it back, spend the money and just not worry about it. Would that suffice?
Say that again?
Would you like me to just move the driveway back the way it was? It's going to create more disturbances, but I'm willing to do it, just put it back.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay. No, but if you want me to, I'll do that.
You were, you were saying, you're trying to bring, you know.
Agreed.
People that are buying the house and you're trying to pull the hard strings, which I understand and I feel bad for them, I really do. But as I said, we would not have got here if you had followed what was approved.
I agree.
So that's all. I just want to make that first.
That's why I started the meeting with that. I agree.
We can't have everybody getting approved to do something, then going ahead and willy-nilly do their own thing after. It can't be done.
I understand that, but other towns aren't as restrictive over driveways. That's all I was trying to say. I've never built a house in Kent and this is the first time and I've learned I'm going to be doing more houses in Kent. I know the process now. So, you know, just other, town of Carmel is very different. Other towns are just very different, that's all. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I've never had to deal with it unless it was the site distance, I understand, or where it matches the house. This has always, always been as a site, as a site change and it's just, I never realized it'd be so difficult.
So I have a question.
Otherwise, I would have done it the right way.
But that's what I'm saying. It could have been addressed.
Agreed. 100%. I agree with you. I agree with you.
So, so one question I have, and maybe it's for us here. If they just put it back where it belongs and restored the site, whatever disturbances there were, is there any action on our part required?
Right. If they're offering to do it.
Or, or do we just all go home now and problem goes away?
That would be nice. If he wants to build the driveway the way it was originally proposed and approved.
I would say I would rather not do it because it will create more site disturbance. However, I will spend the money and do it the right way if you want me to. It just, whatever gets us closing quick.
So to answer your question, Tom, the site is, is what it is now. And if it was going to be now constructed as originally planned, we still have what is there presently. So you'd need to have an amended site plan to address the mitigation in terms of putting, putting back what had been disturbed that wasn't approved.
Okay. That's where the code would be requiring this board to do. It's not a field change because it's, as I think the chairman is alluding to, it's a substantive component of, of the site. This is, I think, the third driveway this evening we've talked about that's in excess of 15%. We're on a roll here, aren't we? And in each case, what the board has asked to Vera to do is to refer the complete documents out to the emergency service folks and the highway superintendent. Really, this should not be any different than that because it's critical to get information back from those agencies. One, because of drainage issues, as, you know, the driveway has been changed, the drainage has been changed, perhaps, we're not sure. And the other, of course, is we want to make sure the emergency services folks are comfortable getting their equipment up and to the house for fire purposes and ambulances and things like that. So I think that in keeping with what the board has been doing all along this evening and has also always done in the past, is part of making any determination of modification of variances of driveway slopes is to hear back from those two agencies. So it suggests that you direct Vera to do the same thing as we've been doing the other driveways tonight in the same circumstances and refer this out. We finally do have, as Jack alluded to, a complete set. We had gotten an ASB built that was missing the drainage pipe and maybe a few other things. We now have that. We have the application and so at this time for, for this meeting now, we have a complete application that heretofore was not able to be referred out because it was incomplete. So that would be the recommendation for this board and counted this for August, hopefully hearing back from emergency services and highway in that time. Okay?
Okay. We're going to go with the revised driveway, the revised driveway. It seems like that'll be quicker to get that approved, hopefully. And it doesn't, it's not going to result in more disturbance in the original location. So we're going to go with that. We have to submit a site plan approval for this? Like an application? Okay. We can talk, I can talk to him. Does anybody have any questions?
So one question I have, we, we've turned away applicants who have asked for waivers like this. So it puts us in an awkward position. You know, what do we tell them now that we've turned them away and you're asking us to go ahead and approve something like that? So that's a very difficult position for the planning board.
Well, it's in your code that allows it, that the planning board can, can issue a waiver between 10 and 15%. Uh-oh.
You have to read the code in its entirety. The code does say that, and I'll just reiterate it because we've had this discussion before. You have to make a showing of practical difficulty. Oops, I put it in the wrong spot. Doesn't qualify for practical difficulty. And, and pardon me, I'm not trying to be cavalier.
But that's not what I did.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate, I'm not going to debate it's in the wrong spot. It was not where it was approved. Okay? And we spent a lot of time getting it approved. And the second thing is you cannot issue a waiver unless and until you hear back from the highway superintendent and emergency services. So Jack is correct. You have waiver provisions in your code. You have asked others to follow them strictly. I, I think you can do nothing less here, so we need to refer to emergency services and highway. And what I would suggest is that the applicant and Mr. Correll put together a written response as to why, and establish a practical difficulty. And, and I'm, that's, I think, what we need to do.
One of the things that we discussed with the board too is that, you know, some type of mitigation. And if the site has changed, there may be more disturbance than what had been originally approved. We're not sure yet if the limited disturbance is identical to what had been proved and just the driveway's changed or we have more disturbance, more trees were cut, we're not sure yet. So as part of this process, the board may consider within the confines of the code, some type of mitigation, whether that would be onsite in terms of additional plantings to mitigate for those trees that were lost or drainage that's been changed, or perhaps off-site mitigation if that would be more beneficial. But I just want to go on the record that that is something the board may consider as part of this process too. Okay?
I have the original tree plan and the area over here where the driveway, there's, there's not that many trees. I will go over the tree plan and see how many trees were going to be taken down by the original approval and how many trees will be taken down for the new approval. That's fine. With me.
So then the disturbance is the same, but it's different.
The, the area disturbance, we'll, I'll have to redo that, yes. That's all I got.
We'll just wait till we hear back.
So we go through the process, I come to an August meeting. At that meeting, if everything is up to your standard and as you feel comfortable, will there be an approval at that meeting? Or we'll get kicked to another meeting? I can't go two, three months with this. It's, these people are going to forget.
We have to wait till we hear back from the emergency services.
Yeah, correct.
And obviously the highway department before we can do anything.
100%. I agree with that. Right. And I'll work on that. Otherwise, I'll just, if I can just put the driveway back, I'll just put the driveway back. I'm willing to just do that and not.
But they already had a public hearing, right?
But it's amended.
Right. I'm just.
They would put it back another month, right? A public hearing? After we see this next step?
I think once you have a look at it and see how it's magnitude and how it feels and sort of substance nature that requires a public hearing in terms of do so, if you look at it and say it's not of that kind of nature, the board has to pass away.
Yeah, I can, we're, we're open to that.
You gotta, you gotta look at what you got.
Follow the steps to process and.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much. And I have the next one.
All right. Below the line.
Jack, is this your stuff? No problem. There you go. Okay. So below the line. Torres' property, that is the project where they had deposited some amount of fill. The board reviewed the plan for sampling at the last meeting and approved and authorized the sampling to occur under the plan. We just spoke with Mr. Lynch, who is the engineer for the project on the way up. They are soliciting bids to do that work and anticipate getting started with the planning shortly. As far as the next one, which is metric motors. We talked to the applicant and Mr. Correll at a workshop about that. Initially, the application was being discussed as just to remediate a violation of allegedly fill being deposited on the site without a permit. However, in the discussion, and the owner was there also, it was determined that the applicant also wishes to do an expansion of the facility there. So the applicant was directed by legal counsel to submit an entire application of not only remediation of the violation, but also the site plan and proposed addition to meet secret requirements and preclude the segmentation aspect of considering two separate issues. So we have the application for the removal of the millings or the fill that is on the site, but we have yet to see the complete application as requested by the planning board attorney for the entire project. So that's what we're waiting for right now. So we're holding review and abeyance. Mr. Westfall, I believe, Jack, you're waiting for the deeds to come back? Okay. So we're very close on that one. We're just waiting for some deeds to come back on that subdivision. Other than that, everything seems to be order on that. TJ Contracting, the gentleman was engaging an engineer. He's putting a barn and a paddock on his property. We have not heard back from him since we met with him on the Zoom meeting. A-class builders, I believe they have withdrawn, but I don't know, Vera, do we have anything in writing from them yet that they've withdrawn their application? All right. So they, it's been inactive. I believe we should direct Vera, the board should direct Vera, to just inquire if they could send something in writing to withdraw formally their application if they choose to do so.
Can you just, can you show them?
Yeah, when I'm done, they can come back. Okay? I'm on a roll here. Mr. Ryder's property, basically, we had met with the, the council and the architect for Mr. Ryder's property. We were waiting for. So we have the application for the removal of the millings or the fill that is on the site. But we have yet to see the complete application as requested by the planning board attorney for the entire project. So that's what we're waiting for right now. So we're holding review and abeyance. Mr. Westfall, I believe, Jack, you're waiting for the deeds to come back? Okay, so we're very close on that one. We're just waiting for some deeds to come back on that subdivision. Other than that, everything seems to be order on that. TJ Contracting, the gentleman was engaging an engineer. He's putting a barn and a paddock on his property. We have not heard back from him since we met with him on the Zoom meeting. A-Class Builders, I believe they have withdrawn, but I don't know, Vera, do we have anything in writing from them yet that they've withdrawn their application? All right, so they, it's been inactive. I believe we should direct Vera, the board should direct Vera, to just inquire if they could send something in writing to withdraw formally their application if they choose to do so. Yeah, when I'm done, they can come back. Okay? I'm on a roll here. Mr. Ryder's property. Basically, we had met with the council and the architect for Mr. Ryder's property. We were waiting for some documents in terms of a business plan as well as a narrative in terms of waivers that have been requested on the site plan. We did receive a letter from the attorney relative to the waivers that have been requested, but we have not yet received a business plan. This is being held in abeyance until we do get that. AJ First Realty, the architect is working on the erosion containment control plan on that. That should be coming in hopefully shortly. The Trail Club, we have not seen anything new. Nichols Road Project and Route 52 Development, we have not seen anything new, although there was correspondence on Route 52 Development, that they will be submitting a revised plan. Our legal counsel was talking with their legal counsel, and it was conveyed that they are working on a revision to the project and will be submitted to the planning board shortly. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Jack?
So am I to understand that the, as far as the millings, the board is, or the consultants on the board are okay with removal of the violation? Except for the, except for the segmentation?
We haven't really reviewed, I haven't reviewed. I can't speak for John. I haven't really reviewed the application per se because it's been incomplete pursuant to legal counsel requirements. What I can tell you, what I have seen is that there is a document showing the location of the fill in question. There's also a letter from a wet consultant indicating that they have reviewed the site and they have located wetlands, but not in association with the violation. The actual, those soils, when you look at the NRCS map, the soils do show the majority of the site in question being hydroxic soils. Now, again, the board's reminded that that map may or may not be accurate, but it is something that needs to be verified. So from my perspective, I have not completed a review of the application, nor have I gone out to the site to verify the conditions as well as the wetland delineation. Because if there are wetland soils underneath the fill, then the wetland delineation becomes something called a, not a standard wetland delineation pursuant to the Army Corps of Engineer manual. It's a different type of delineation. We have to actually go down through the fill and determine if there are wetlands there or not. So it's something where I think that, at least from my perspective, we're given direction to wait for the entire application to come in before we proceed accordingly. So we have not looked at that. And we cannot direct the applicant to remove the fill without first getting approval, obviously, from this board.
So you seem to be talking about fill and millings. Millings, which were deposited behind the building, is ground-up asphalt. The fill that was placed 20 years ago in that lawn between the building and 684 is completely vegetated. And we were, we're not digging holes in it. We don't want to dig holes in that thing. I mean, 20 years ago.
So...
What?
Fill and millings. So somebody, somebody piled this material over a period of years in a wetlands doesn't necessarily legitimize it after it's 20 years or so. But that being said, what's being focused on really is that there were millings, as Jack alluded to, on the site. I can't determine, standing here, whether the millings are or are not in wetlands. They have a consultant who said it's not, but I have not yet verified that in the field. I can't say if it is or it isn't.
Okay, we had Ted Kuzlowski, who's the wetlands inspector for the town of Patterson. He flagged the wetlands and the wetland boundary is shown and the millings are not within that boundary. And as far as the building goes, we will do... Your attorney is going to make a decision or give some information about the segmentation issue. And we will also do, get somebody to...
So just to be, just to be clear...
Why don't you just stay up there? Because I'm getting dizzy.
I'm trying to get my...
You're getting your steps in.
I'm getting my steps in. So the board's policy has been always, in the past, when there's been an applicant that has presented a wetland delineation by their own consultant, to have the town's wetland consultant, myself or someone else in my position, go out and confirm those wetlands as being accurate and complying with the town code. That has not been done in this case because we are waiting again for the complete application. So I have not been out to the site. As far as deciding whether or not, you know, the building and the segmentation, I believe that the planning board council had decided and opined at the workshop with Mr. Correll and the owner present that a complete application to be submitted for this application would consist of the, whatever remediation they're going to be proposing for the violation as well as the proposed building itself. And that's where we left it. Until we hear differently from Mr. Arioli, the planning board council, I believe that's where it stands presently.
Okay, so the necessary steps are an application and then a determination by our wetlands consultants about the wetland status. Do I understand that correctly?
Right. And there had been some time in the past, TJ, you, where Mr. Correll had requested Mr. Andrews and I to come out and witness soil testing onsite for stormwater management practices where we had actually no application for any stormwater practices to be installed. So we want to make, you know, sometimes the cart gets put for the horse, you know? There's a process. We're just trying to follow the process accordingly the way it makes, you know, in the code.
Was something missing from the application?
We don't have one.
What's missing of...
Something checked wrong or something?
There's an application.
There's an application, Mr. Merini. But again, to repeat, it's just for the removal of the millings. It has, it is not in compliance with what planning board council had directed the applicant to submit, which is in addition to the milling removal, the conceptual site plan so we know, the planning board knows what's going on, and we don't have segmentation under secret.
So we're repeating ourselves here?
I think I just did.
Yes. I think we're repeating what we said last go around.
But we submitted the conceptual plan for the extension to the building. The town has that. Mr. Iarizo would like to speak or no?
I'm sort of, I'll speak, but I'm not really sure what issue I'll make. I can tell you what I've done.
You'll have to come up.
If there's any value to what I've...
Start with your name. Start, state your name.
My name is Greg Iarizo. Many years ago, little by little, I had separated the root systems from the trunks of trees that had fallen down from all of the storms over the course of time. And while I was doing that, I excavated a little opening in the ground. I rolled rocks into it and filled it and used the same material to level the ground out. And at the same time, grass was planted. That was done little by little. Aside from the millings, there was nothing brought into the site. There was nothing filled. There's no elevation changes at all. And the only other thing that I did was I began to prune the forest, eliminating the small, excuse me, two- and three-inch trees and make it a park-like setting. And that's all I was doing. I did bring in the millings to stabilize the ground so that I could park cars without creating a muddy situation. But, and in all preparation to expand metric motors.
I don't believe you have too much to worry about here. What these guys want to see is just what you plan to build and where your violation is. Your violation might be very small, and Bruce gets, has to look at what you plan and intend on building and which actually the problem, the property may not be as big as you really think. But he's not going to look at it until he has all the information because he might be, with this new building, am I correct so far? With this new building that you plan on building, there may be something that could be incorporated there. There might be, you know, a gray area where something could be done that's very simple.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
That's all we're saying. We just want to see what you want to build there. That's your next step, right? You just want to build something there.
I think that you do down on here on the next page.
Am I wrong? I'm trying to say it in simple terms. I'm trying to say it in something that I would understand.
The bottom line here is you can't work with nothing. Okay? And so your code has requirements for what constitutes a complete application. You just don't get a sketch. You get an application. You get supporting documentation.